Members are here. We'll go right into it. Article one, to consider municipal government public facilities coronavirus preparedness plans. We're gonna turn this part over to our town manager Gary to start this discussion.
Alright, so I think what I'm gonna do to kick this off, I'm going to read what I sent to my, to the board last night. Just said it was a very busy day, actually started on Sunday, late Sunday morning with a lot of flood of emails and things that were starting to happen in regards to COVID-19 and what communities were doing or thinking about doing. Of course, we know about the schools and their programs. So, I'm going to start by reading correspondence that I sent to the board last night. All today, our department directors, which was yesterday, as well as key staff, other key staff and I participated in a teleconference by the main CDC regarding COVID-19 community preparedness. After the conference, we discussed what we learned and discussed the department's thoughts as to how we plan to handle this pandemic with the goal of helping do our part to flatten the curve and minimize the spread of COVID-19 in our community and within our municipal facilities. As such, we consider our goal to be two-part, meaning that we do as much as is prudent and practical within our facilities to help minimize the spread in the community and also to protect our staff so we can continue to provide the much-needed services that our residents need. As you already know, many of our staff possess mandatory specialized training and certifications to provide the many services we deliver. It is very unlikely that we would be able to fill those positions should they become unavailable to work due to exposure to COVID-19. It is true that our front-end staff are young and not considered to be in the at-risk factor groups for becoming gravely ill. However, they are still susceptible and can become carriers of the virus. We now know that according to CDC guidance that the virus is easily transmitted by people not exhibiting symptoms and that the virus can stay alive on hard services for three days. We should consider these facts when deciding what level of services we plan to offer at the town office as risk to transmitting from the public to staff and the staff to the public is real. Further, our clientele we provide service to range from young adults to high-risk senior citizens. A decision to close the town office to foot traffic is a hard one as it will certainly cause some hardships. However, one only has to consider the risk to public health and continued services to help inform their decisions. I do expect that many of our citizens will exercise caution and minimize their travels to public spaces in the community. But we do know based on what we've heard happening elsewhere that many people disregard public health advisories. The attached outline provides preliminary recommendations for you to consider. I hope that you've had some time to review before this meeting here at 11:30 today on Tuesday. I would have liked to have had this for you sooner, but our work was ongoing and fast and furious developing, getting guidance from CDC, meeting with the departments, and then attending the school board meeting last night, the joint school committee meetings. And then afterwards, we formulated some options for the board to consider and that was sent to them last evening. So with that said, what I've done, there have been updates coming in regards to what other communities are doing and what motor vehicles, Bureau Motor Vehicles, they just announced shortly, a short while ago that all of their branch offices, including their state office, is closed. Meaning that if we have registrations that are complicated, that need us to make phone calls for guidance, there's not going to be anybody there to process those registrations. We also know that with the state of emergency declared by the governor that law enforcement, from what I understand, is not going to be enforcing expired plates. They're gonna allow people to drive with their plates expired for thirty to sixty days. That stuff is, I just got that, so I'm gonna wanna check online for accuracy on the North Peak's website. But that is something that is encouraging because for us, there are options for people to register their cars online but we cannot use car registrations by mail. So, and then with the options for rapid renewal online, implies to only renewals, not for transfers or new vehicles or vehicles sold from one person to another where there's dollar sales and stuff like that that have to be processed here and sales taxes to be collected here. So with that said, I'll go into the outline that I've given the board. And this again is based on, I put this together based on what, you know, I've talked to the board for and I've asked them for their input, the department heads and key staff, and as well as what's going on with other communities. And so, I will go through those and stop me if you, as we go through, if you have questions. Obviously, there are some things that are fairly simple and straightforward in places, public buildings, that we can close down that have very little hardship on in the community. The one that has the most hardship obviously is right here at the town office. So, we have a couple of scenarios we can discuss as to what level of service we can provide at the town office and I'll go through that. So, actions to consider by this board, immediate full closing of facilities to public access. The easy ones are public works only accessible to staff. Pollution control, only accessible to staff for the protection of staff and the people that we need to be able to continue the work there. They're highly specialized, they have certifications, they become ill, they cannot do their job. And also for safety to the public because it is a high-risk area. The library, I coordinated with the library since the library has their own governance board. I consulted with the library director and he consulted with his board and they decided that they were going to close. They pulled the board.
And pulled me.
Okay, well. Safety complex, we had a couple of groups using the safety complex for activities, nonprofits that were using it. We stopped that as well. By executive decision and the board can decide, all of these earlier things that I'm announcing right now were sort of executive decisions on a, to be determined basis by this board if that's something they're gonna continue to do moving forward. The recreation department is comprised of a few different aspects to that. The fitness center has been closed and that's recommended by the main CDC. And the school, since the community gym, the fitness center is on the school campus, there were some concerns expressed by the school about that remaining open. That is currently closed. All rec department activities are canceled until further notice. I think there are some programs that are sort of in the hopper. We're not, you know, like in April and we're not gonna say right now. Those things are done, we're gonna play that by ear and see how things progress. The multipurpose is closed, there is a question as to whether or not this board would consider the community walkers that like to walk around in the rec department. If that's something that we want to continue to allow. The Boy Scout building is closed, that building is being utilized by the Boy Scouts mostly for their meetings. You're gonna have to consider if that's the one building that we want to continue to be off limits. Those are more, some of the more simple, with the exception of the rec department, decisions to be made as for public offices. Town office, whether or not.
Gary, excuse me.
Go ahead.
Did you wanna?
Go line by line?
That's what I'm saying, since you've immediately full closing facilities, should we?
Yeah.
Instead of going backwards, can we take care of that section?
Absolutely.
And then we can go to another subsection that you put together?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, based on what our town manager has stated, what do board members think right now? Is that appropriate?
I would agree, I see no problem here.
I wanna acknowledge that we did get an email about the gym. While I understand the concerns, you know, I don't think that, I for one do not have the medical background or the knowledge to go against what the CDC or the school recommends, so I think that was the right thing to do. And then for the community walkers, I feel like, you know, you have a question mark there. If we're closing it, if we're closing everything for everyone else, you know, I'm not sure that we should 'cause they still may use the restrooms with exposes these people to have to go and clean it and disinfect it. Just my opinion, I would close the multipurpose completely if you're gonna do that.
What I'd like to do on a really quick thing, we do have department heads. Have you guys read this, studied this? And is every department head on board with this?
Yes.
This section so far? Everyone's nodding yes.
Yep.
So what would be the appropriate action at this point?
Well, what do you guys think about the walkers?
Yeah, the walkers, I guess at the beginning.
Well, there's, just this morning, there was a couple of people that usually attend the gym that came to the rec department asking if they could walk around as well, other than the routine walkers that usually come every single day. So, we're seeing that as a possibility of more people wanting to come in if that would remain open. So, I would be on the same side as Laurie saying, I think it might be a good idea just to close down the building for safety reasons, for closing everything else.
I think, I think another consideration too, or my consideration, but I want you all to know that, you know, we've already discussed, you know, should we decide to close facilities? We have projects that we, we know that we wanna do, we're gonna take advantage of that downtime to take care of some things relevant to each department, and I think the rec department, for instance, with, with the fitness center, for example, we're gonna take that time, that downtime, sanitize, clean, do some maintenance, if there's some painting, some floor waxing, whatever it is, we're gonna, you know, that's gonna be a great time, if you wanna say that, to go ahead and do those things. So, everybody's gonna continue to work and make preparations for other stuff that's coming, you know, for activities in the summer or whatnot.
So you're doing no layoffs here?
No.
Really?
Pollution control, with the construction going on, is that gonna still continue?
Yes, as far as I know, I spoke with the foreman. So far, no direction from his boss to take a break or whatever, we're gonna keep moving forward.
Anything else? Laurie, I've said?
So they're, I guess they're recommending that we do shut down the multipurpose?
Yeah.
And are you okay with that?
Yeah, I, I, I'm not gonna deny that these people have worked to decide, I mean, they're the ones that are, you know, doing the research and like I've seen all the emails coming through from every other community and everyone's doing the same thing, I mean, I can't question that 'cause I don't know better.
Okay. Do we need, do we need a motion on second at this point on that subsection? So, can someone make a motion?
So moved? We accept, we accept the closures as suggested.
Second?
Stand by Laurie, any more discussion on this subject? All in favor? Gary? Alright, continue with the town office options.
So, in your outline, the next point of discussion is the town office, what the options are. First one would be close to the public, staff still working, we could accept tax and sewer payments. People can make payments online through our website. We could accept payments by credit card, by the phone, and payments can be submitted by mail with checks. Motor vehicle registrations, if you were to do those online, you can only do renewals. Not everybody has access to computers and that technology or can't navigate. We would encourage that people who have a little bit of instruction how to navigate the website, we could help them out by, they can simply call us, we'll put some guidance up on the website instructing them to do so. Registrations cannot be done by mail. Think I've got some extra guidance here. Natalie? Help me out? On that?
That's new registrations here.
Huh?
New registrations can't be done by mail.
New registrat-, there is some guidance for new registrations to be done by mail. That's part of that extra handout that you were giving, that doesn't have any punch holes in it. Customers can provide all the required documents, send it to the town office drop by mail or Dropbox or email. If they need new plates, we would have to ask them by phone what they would like, if they're rolling or transferring plates. You know, there's, there's a protocol here that they can do things by mail. The other thing too, and I guess with motor vehicles is that we can process, we'll be able to process transactions by mail but know that motor vehicles in the main office in the buses closed. Sometimes we do have to call with difficult questions and they'll, they will not give any support. So it could very well happen that some people might not be able to register their vehicles. However, the Secretary of State has indicated that they're not going to be enforcing expired plates, so.
We gonna put the board out on that?
Yes. Everything that, I got a section here on website updates and we'll get to that.
Okay.
Vital records, birth certificate, death and birth certificates can be processed by phone, email, mail. Elections, voter registration cards can be done by mail, absentee ballots can be done by mail. And I know that we have an upcoming election nomination papers can be done by mail as well, can be mailed in. We can do the Dropbox thing, there's various things that we can do. General assistance, we can do applications by phone, a lot of communities are doing that and process those. Community development assessing inquiries can be done by phone and email. Code enforcement, the same, inquiries can be done by phone and email. The town health officer, which happens to be our code enforcement guy, will coordinate with the ambulance department for guidance and assistance. So, this is not typically in the normal scope of work for the town's health officer but should he be asked to do work within the community, he's gonna lean on probably Chris Albert with our ambulance department who's our safety, our training person for OSHA and health and stuff like that. Trainings. Those are the options if we were to close, okay? Of services that we can continue to provide. Town office limited hours, and I would say if this is something you're gonna consider, we would have to reassess as needed. I'm giving you an example here based on some other communities that I've seen at 2:00 AM, uh, 2:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Hours of business, for example. Bit of a concern, we feel that this would concentrate people into larger crowds, not necessarily what we were shooting for. Some towns are considering this, like Forkin', I'm not sure if they're still gonna do this, they are considering limited hours. The difference between the Forkin' office and here, they have a very large lobby and they have a vestibule and so they can actually queue their customers and allow for some social distancing whereas the town office over here is very crowded in the front. Not necessarily ideal for being able to provide some distance. We can use the drop-off box for payments, our customers can continue to do that but we would encourage public to utilize online payments, resources or pay by check, by mail. If we were to do that, we would provide and require hand sanitizer use by customers probably before their transaction and after. We could potentially install a clear protective barrier between the clients and staff. That's the limited hours option. The last option for town office would be to remain fully open and reassess as needed. We already have the drop-off box for payments, we could purchase, you know, stand-up hand sanitizing stations provided that we could find some right now. And require the customers to sanitize before and after transactions. We can continue to encourage the public to utilize online payments, resources, pay by check, by mail. And again, there too, we would install a clear protective barrier between clients and staff. That, I will skip the outline and go into some points to consider in the back of your page, your document.
Where?
Considerations, it's called considerations.
Okay.
It's important that we kinda skip to that right now as you're gonna make a decision as to what level of hours we're gonna have here at the town office. The town office closure to the public is definitely the most proactive measure. It's the most be safe and sorry type of reaction or action that we're going to implement. Certainly gonna cause some hardships to the public. And then when I made this outline, it was, we didn't get the update from motor vehicles as to what we were going to do in respect to expired plates or transactions that I think are gonna be lenient on that. And obviously the hardship would have been the people that can't renew their vehicles registrations online and they wouldn't be allowed to come in, but we do have some guidance where people could register their cars by mail. And so, it's certainly gonna be a longer process to do than otherwise than what we're doing now. All other town business can be accomplished by phone and email.
Quick question.
Or mail, yes.
If this was closed down completely, if the town office closes down completely and people are calling in for assistance or questions, we just have the one phone line? So if someone calls, does it tie up? Let's say we have three of the ladies working up front, they can all grab the phone?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Some of the staff considerations, you all set now?
Yep.
Okay. Staff considerations, and again, this goes back to my opening statement about trying to protect the staff as well so we can continue to provide the services. If we're, if we are open to the public, we are potentially putting our staff at risk for becoming exposed. And if they become exposed, and we know that they're exposed, they're gonna have to self-quarantine for fourteen days. And once they're exposed, we're exposed, we could find ourselves in a position where we're not gonna be able to provide services because we don't have the motor vehicle agent that are trained to do registrations or people that run the elections or provide the vital statistics, statistics. So, I think it's essential that we try to minimize as best we can exposure to staff so we can continue to at least service the community remotely, if you will, you know, by email or by phone or any other means that, other than coming into the building. Staff that would be suspected to be exposed, according to the CDC guidelines, a test won't be administered on them until they run a fever of at least a hundred degrees. And we hear that testing is hard, is still hard to get right now, so there are a lot of unknowns as to whether or not, what that means. I think we would consider that anybody that was working in the organization that was being exposed, be it themselves, and they thought they might be, or they're running a fever, or somebody in their family, in their household, their household is at risk or quarantined, we're gonna tell those employees that they need to stay home for fourteen days. And again, this, this outline is for today. Things are changing all the time and we may have to adjust based on what we learn. One of the things to consider, if we do send employees home that are non-EMS staff, are we sending them home with or without pay? Meaning, are they gonna be required to take their EBT time for that time off? Or are we going to send them home with pay as precaution because we don't really know? We're sort of in uncharted territory here in that respect with EMS. You know, they are in the front lines and they could be, with the ambulance department exposed, we're going to treat that as if it might be a worker's complaint if they have to stay home if they were exposed. We're gonna, we don't know if that's gonna work that way, but we're gonna at least document the case that way. What we're telling them is that if they are exposed, they're gonna be home, sent home with pay because they can't continue to do their job, obviously, if they've been, their health has been compromised or you could put others at risk. Again, sort of a preliminary plan that we might have to reassess and learn and see what other communities are doing in that respect. So, going back, I guess that kinda concludes sort of the town office things. I will say that yesterday, and I get that people don't mean, they don't mean harm or anything like that. You know, one of our first customers yesterday came in and self-declared that they just got back from Europe and their flight was delayed, but they wanted to come in and pay their taxes before they conclude interest. Should that employee stay, should that person have stayed home and mailed payments by check and mail? Probably. And so, we had a lot of people come in yesterday telling us where they had been. Some of them came from Florida, some of them came from overseas. And so, you get the idea that, you know, if we remain open, our people are gonna disregard the advisories that are out there, come here and put people at risk. And I think it puts us at risk to be able to provide services for the duration of this, however long it's gonna last. And also, from the community standpoint of creating a space for people to still come in here and get out of their homes and potentially spread the virus. As we know that people now, that people are asymptomatic, that don't show symptoms, are spreading the disease. They don't have to have a fever to be infectious, so. That being said, my recommendation to you would be that we do close the town office and we provide our services via phone, email, mail. We'll be of assistance as much as we can, we'll put as much guidance on the website as to if somebody has a question or a call for a building permit, whatever it is, we're gonna continue to provide services. It might take a little longer than it would normally if somebody could come through the door.
What I've seen in other places and everything, everything seems to be based on a two-week basis to be evaluated on an ongoing basis. So that's something you could say, we're gonna be closed for the next two weeks?
Yes.
We'll give guidance if we're gonna be longer or by two-week sessions or?
Yeah.
Is that how, would that be appropriate?
I think that's definitely appropriate, some communities are saying, close until further notice, close for two weeks, we will reassess. I think that when you make your motions here today, that you consider, there's gonna be discussion here in our agenda that we're gonna add as other businesses to, what are the boards gonna do for in respect to meetings, finance committee meetings, convenable committee meeting?
Yeah, I got that in my head.
And so, if I don't, if we don't have, if the boards should decide that we're gonna suspend board meetings for a month, then that would make it hard for us to convene and reassess. So is there a way, is there a way for us to make an action here that allows for some flexibility to extend beyond two weeks or beyond the end of March without having to convene another board meeting? So, I guess that's something for you to consider.
Yes, Laurie?
I, I think I saw, and that could be a very early email, 'cause, you know, we've had all the town, like, I mean, I've read so what so many towns are doing now, I'm really confused. I think someone in there said that they closed their town office, but they were willing to take appointments if somebody really like didn't understand how to do something or couldn't do it on the phone. Is that a good or bad idea? I just wanna throw it out there.
I agree. Go ahead.
You know, so many of our, of our citizens here are not going to understand what's happening here as far as our services. My appointment, if they're calling, at least they wanna know why. But are we gonna have anything here posted or an individual to at least inform the public that this is why we're closed and if you need an appointment or if you can delay your transactions, that we can at least advise them in that manner? Not everybody's online.
I think, I think anybody's, we'll have guidance up on the doors, in our buildings, online. We're gonna send out a press release, letting everybody know what the options are. And I think people can free to call in if they have questions. I'm not, I think, appointments on a case-by-case basis. There's a lot of things I think we can resolve over the phone. And for those more complicated issues, I mean, we certainly be willing to sit down and make appointments on a case-by-case basis, if that makes any sense.
So really, what you're, what the thought is, is just to what? Put a, put a post outside the door that we are closed for this reason till such a date? And to return to?
Yes.
Beyond that date?
Yeah, absolute communication notification is going to be mandatory.
I mean, we'll, we'll utilize, we'll utilize the Facebook, you know, like the rec department and PD and Ange's Facebook accounts to push the message on social media. We will utilize the press to do that as well. And then we'll do publications and keep our website updated daily because we know that the guidance from CDC is updated often and things change. We know that there's probably gonna be daily updates. And so, part of our protocol will be to, in the morning when we come in, to look at what the updates are and refresh our website, make sure that everything is, all the advisories are, and the links are fresh.
So, so if somebody comes to the door, these, these employees are at their stations. What do they do? Just ignore them? How do you, how do you respond to them? I mean, they're gonna be looking at you like?
I know.
Why don't you open the door?
Right. I think there are a lot of places that are closing their. I think there are a lot of places that are closing their doors, and I'll give you some examples. Some of the credit unions have closed their lobbies, the drive-through. A lot of, some of the restaurants, McDonald's has closed their dining area.
Tim Hortons.
Tim Hortons.
But I'm just saying, what do you plan, what would you do? Do we just tell them to go home?
I think we can talk, we can go outside, I guess, and talk to them. We're learning as we go, Doug.
Yeah, I understand.
You know? We're not gonna be removed and say, "Vatasha, who's there?" It's not gonna be like that, obviously, so I think we can find ways to communicate with them, that they know that we can provide services, and just maybe with the mandate.
Well, that's fine, as long as they don't get ignored.
Absolutely.
That's what I'm trying to get at, is just, don't look down like there's nobody there.
Don't answer the door, or go through the window at least, and say, "I'm sorry there, but keep a sign, we're officially closed, no further notice."
We'll be sensitive to that.
Okay.
I think that you're gonna have very little of that, just because, like you said, like, Tim Hortons, you can only go through drive-through, McDonald's, you can only go through drive-through, the credit unions can't go in, like, they're gonna, people are gonna see this so much that it's just gonna be, oh, you know? I, I.
We're all dealing with it.
You know, and whether it's all overkill, like some people think or not, I mean, it doesn't matter what decision we make, one way or another.
We need to err on the side of safety.
Right, I think I'd rather go overboard than not respond, and be the one community that's sitting here that didn't, and, and, you know, everybody's sick.
That's a very good point, Laurie. I would add one more thing in there. I've been thinking about this. We do, you know, I guess I would ask that consideration be made to not allow staff outside of the St. John Valley for any business-related travel.
So we can talk about that. I know that some of the, our community's largest employer, Twin Rivers, has, I think, implemented a 250-mile restriction for their employees, and also one for going to Canada, is there something as well? If they knew, then they're not, as my understanding, they're not going back into the workplace, so you will, you can, I, I don't know the legality of that, off the top of my head.
You can control the work day, is what I'm suggesting at this point, just the work day.
Yeah.
The personal stuff, I don't know if you can control that.
So you're saying business, like, especially, you said business, especially getting any training outside of the.
Absolutely, yeah.
And there's nothing going on for training anywhere.
No, 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 but just.
Yep, absolutely.
It covers the valley, because right now, our ambulance personnel are gonna be in the valley. I don't know what else out there.
I mean, AMI F and transfers?
Yeah.
That's something that's, you guys probably might be looking at.
Potentially, it depends, I mean, with some staff members being out and all that, you know, and if we have to self-quarantine, if we do have exposures, and we get short to the point where transfers, we're gonna be not a priority, so, yeah, but there's that potential, so.
Kevin?
What happens if we have employees that live in Canada?
There's no travel restrictions as far as Canadians and Americans right now.
Not yet.
Not yet.
It won't be long now. Canadians are not gonna be allowed out of the country. Next couple days, I don't think.
Really?
So I don't know, but that's a good question. Cross-Canadians, how they'll deal with that.
Cross-border traffic is something that we're monitoring, open borders is something that we're monitoring very closely right now, because as you all know, all of the valley towns send their municipal ways to a landfill in Canada.
Oh, yeah.
We are closely monitoring right now, because we need to be prepared for, if the border should close to that, where, what are we gonna do? So, we, like I said.
Any employees that live, just the one, anyone else in your departments that live outside of, or in Emerson, or in your brother? Key employees?
I would think, I mean, there's a lot of nurses, and I would think if they're gonna close something like that, I would imagine if, you know, key personnel are needed to cross, they're gonna be able to cross. It would hold, I mean.
I think they're gonna label that as unnecessary travel. So if it's for work, that'll be one thing, but if you say you're going to make a rush off.
Town manager has made a recommendation that we completely shut down?
Completely, two-foot traffic.
Two-foot traffic, absolutely. What are your thoughts, any more thoughts before we react to this, or take action on it, I mean?
We brought up the issues that concern you, so then we're, I don't have anything else.
No, I don't either.
I would make a motion that we go with town manager's recommendation, and follow the outline that he's put for office closure.
Indefinitely, or via a stretch of time, or?
I think the two of you should be able to decide that, like, over the phone, if we can't meet, so I don't know that we should put indefinitely, I think you guys should.
I would start with two weeks, and then go by.
You know, or as needed, or can we make a motion that says, you know, he can call the chair and vice-chair, and you guys can make that decision?
I believe you can make that motion, yes. You could include that in your motion, that way it would avoid, because the next subject we'll talk about would be the board meetings.
Yeah.
So if you make that form of the motion, which would include further closures to be in consultation with the board chair and the vice-chair, with the town manager.
Or, I mean, even all of us, like, he messaged all of us, we all.
Yeah, we're all available.
Then that would be a quorum, and we can't.
Yeah, we can't do that.
Okay, we got it.
He raised.
Doug, are you okay with that?
Yes, I am.
Can you second that motion?
Yeah.
Yes, I guess, all in favor.
Kevin, you just admitted the distinction.
All right. Let's talk about board meetings before we move on to other stuff.
Okay.
In my head, coming here, I had kind of resolved that we should suspend our board meetings for further notice, which will include, I mean, if budgets are late, they've been late before, we've done them before, in July, and, I mean, this is a different time, different place, and I'm not opposed to doing that.
Well, and I think the legislature's looking at relaxing the Freedom of Information Law, right?
Yeah.
To allow for just, you know, if you had to do a Skype meeting, or a, you know.
Well, we currently have tentatively planned a finance committee meeting this week, and
Next week.
Two board meetings next week.
The finance committee meeting this week?
The 19th.
And so.
Finance.
Finance, not the board.
You're not on it.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
They're waiting for our meeting.
Didn't have anything written though, okay, I got it.
So, I think, you know, we could definitely postpone those. And then, the chair has the, the chair has the ability to call the meetings, so we can consult with your board and decide when, 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 not too soon.
For at least the finance committee and the budget meeting that we have, I would suggest that that be canceled.
Postponed.
Postponed, whatever word is appropriate, for our board, upcoming board meeting on next Tuesday, I think it is, that we suspend that one until further notice.
So we, maybe we should just follow the town's operation?
You know, if the town opens up in a couple weeks, that we. Yeah.
We resolve.
Yeah, and we'll, again, with, like Laurie has suggested, decisions can be made by you and I, and our town manager.
The only thing that I have for present matters, there, you know, there is obviously business by the board that needs to be done, there may be issues that come up that may need board action, other than our budget process, you know, and so we have a little bit of time that we can kind of push that off a little bit, so I think we're gonna have to play by here.
And we'll get more guidance, right? If we can, you know, if the rules are lax, or on the Freedom of Information Act, that we can maybe do things, you know, without really pressing via phone, email, or Skype, or Messenger, or whatever.
I know that one of the, some of the issues that we were supposed to deal with in some of the next coming meetings was to decide on the revitalization projects that we were supposed to do. We have those contractors waiting for a decision as to what, what are our intentions. And so by postponing our meetings for a while, it's going to kick that further down, and, you know, cause hardship on the contractor as well. So, it's something to consider.
We'll play that one by year, we'll see how far we can get, and what happens in the next couple of, three weeks.
Okay.
Motion, do we need a motion on that one, or that inclusive of what we talked about a while ago?
No, I think you have the go here to call a meeting or cancel a meeting.
I don't know that we do need one, at all, but anyway, I just proposed that we follow the town's.
Yeah. I'm gonna take a couple minutes, I'm just gonna make a phone call, I see that we're gonna be a little bit later than I thought, so let me clear my agenda a little bit here. Doug, if you want to continue with discussions, go right here.
So, our town website, we're gonna, we put some preliminary information yesterday with CDC links, and what some of the facilities that we've already closed, and that this board is going to be meeting for, to make some decisions. We're gonna continue, like I said earlier, to update our website with fresh information regarding what we do here, and new guidance from the state of Maine or from CDC for the community, so that can be a resource to them. That will be something that we'll be updating every morning. And some of those, some of those links could even be like news releases by CDC, whatever information you put out there as links, we'll put that into our website. Town staff, I just wanna discuss. Just to kind of update you, what we're considering with town staff, we've already provided some COVID-19 guidance memo yesterday for protective measures, and what they need to be, to be safe, and if they should feel like they've been exposed, so they do have some guidance to guide them, and that's been distributed to all the employees. Again, that's something that will be updated as we learn, and send out maybe weekly memorandums, or memorandums as needed as things change. We continue to assess our high-risk employees in high-risk workplaces, such as the sewer department. I did, let you know that we've already sent home a high-risk employee at sewer department, a sixty-plus age employee with underlying health issues, we did send that person home. They are exposed over there in the sewer department, and we cannot put that person at risk to COVID-19. So that person is at home with pay, until further notice. EMS and ambulance department, they already have the CDC guidance, or their own guidance for COVID-19 precautions. Again, if they were exposed, if they felt like they were exposed or at risk, or if they were positive, they would be required to quarantine for fourteen days. We do ask the concerns about the impacts to our staffing levels, the ambulance departments, we serve our community and two other communities as well. And so, we have already had discussions about how are we gonna make sure that we maintain staff in the event that we lose employees, and so that might require us to pay more overtime, you know, we're gonna have to be flexible and go on the fly here. And Eric has instructed me that maybe their guidelines are gonna be relaxed a little bit, to allow other people to come in. I know that we are encouraging the fire department staff to become drivers, if they're not already drivers, for the ambulance. I had mentioned earlier that some of the EMS employees had questions about whether or not an exposure and a positive test to COVID-19 would be considered as a compensation claim. We don't have the answers to that, we will be discussing this with our workers' compensation provider, and figure out how that's gonna be handled, but we will treat such claims, or such incidents as a claim for documentation purposes, and whether or not it becomes a workers' comp claim will be determined. Police department, we met yesterday, they're gonna continue to provide the services that they provide, they're just gonna utilize caution when entering suspect areas, they'll be the infection, and they will coordinate with EMS, and Chris Albear, our exposure safety training guy, for, if they do need to go into places that it might be a concern. Fire department, you know, we will work with the chief to provide resources and guidance to them as needed.
I have a question for Eric and maybe Rob. Do you have, I don't know what to call them, the medical suits that are necessary if you know you're going into an exposure area? Do you have these on hand already?
Minimal amount.
Minimal amounts? And that means what?
I have very little gowns, I have maybe a few in each rig, in any ambulance. Masks, the N95 masks, I got like four bottles, and gloves are okay on, two little base shoes, it's more than gowns. I put in a request yesterday.
You put in a request?
Yeah, to obtain more. That is gonna be based on your risk area and need, so there's no guarantee I'm gonna get those.
If the PD responds to something, and they find that there's something going on, it looks like you've coordinated an effort to at least get EMS there, staff, are you guys protected above and beyond? Can you, can you wear gowns over your guns? Stupid question there, but I'm just wondering for the protection of your offices.
Actually, CDC did come out with a law enforcement response to that. Right now, we're just, our PPE is mostly gloves.
How about masks?
We have no masks.
The trick with the N95 masks is you need to be fit-tested for that.
Yeah, that's true.
So, in order for them, I mean, they can always throw one on if they want, but if they're not fit-tested, I'm not sure what.
How long does it take to get fit-tested?
Oh, it doesn't take very long, the hospitals are up for it, five, 10 minutes, you can get fit-tested. But, with that being said, I just found out this morning, apparently they have run law on supplies for fit-testing too, so, and I'm not certain of that, but I was definitely gonna find out there, surely, if we have to do more fit-testing with some fires that wanna drive for us, I will have it fit-tested.
Okay.
Make sure that we're covered.
Is that something that would be a benefit to the PD employees to get fit-tested?
Oh, absolutely.
So, just so you know, and Eric was so part of our CDC teleconference yesterday, there was discussion about, correct me if I'm wrong, they have established four tiers for.
Right.
If there's requests made for tests, supplies, things that are needed for this, that they've assigned four tiers of who's gonna get what first.
Right.
And so I think EMS is at the bottom of the list, correct?
They were, well, the top of.
Were they at the top?
They were in the tier one, which is your high priority, because we're frontline, so they were.
Were you on the tier one with the healthcare facilities?
Tier one with the healthcare facilities, EMS.
That's where you need to be, yeah.
Yeah, EMS was in that list with the tier ones, and so we were top of the line, or top of the list, so.
I'm hopeful I'll get those gowns that are requested. We'll see, I didn't get anything back as far as any emails from that, so.
We've got something else, right?
We still have some other stuff to discuss.
Yeah, well, can we go to the big one? Can we go to the discussion on employee pay?
Employee pay, so, that's a good question. There are, again, this is sort of like uncharted territory. What I've seen other towns do, and some of the, I think some of the emails that I sent you from my listserv, other towns, just to kind of try to be helpful for you guys to have some perspective, what the communities are thinking about in regards to their responses, their action plans, and what they're doing for their employees. Many of them are sending, who have employees that are considered to be exposed or positive, are sent home with pay. Whether or not, I guess that's a community decision by this council, whether or not they wanna do so, or they're gonna require that they use up their sick time instead. That's entirely up to this board. You know, the thing is, is that it's a hard thing to weigh, because if we sit there and I have, I'll just give you an example, we have one employee at the front who wasn't feeling well this morning, and we told her to stay home. And we don't know, we don't know if she, if the fever's gonna, if she's gonna have a fever tomorrow, if it's gonna last, we don't know if the person's gonna have access to a test, to be determined whether or not they have COVID-19. And so, are we gonna let them back into the workplace? Or are we gonna tell them to? Or are we gonna tell them to stay home, and so who's, who's, is it fair to make them stay home? And not pay them, or require them to use their sick time, or do we send, do we ask them to come in if we think that they're okay? And so I, you see where I'm going with this, there's two sides of this coin.
Well, and, and another, if they can't afford to stay home, like, if I'm sitting there and I need, I'm, need my paycheck, I, I might not tell you guys, I don't know, and, and come in, so. I'm not saying any of the staff in the town would do that, you know, but, I mean, if you gotta pay a bill, or you gotta, so. I feel like it's already in the budget, it's not like we're offering bonuses for staying home, it's in the budget that we were, you know, we're covering anyway, and, um.
I, I, I would, I would highly suggest that what Laurie is alluding to, I totally agree with you, I mean, it's in the budget.
Yeah, it's, it's there, so.
And the big thing is that, uh, we don't want to discourage people from not coming in, if, from coming in if they're sick, but, we can also classify or make a statement that says if it's not coronavirus, or whatever it is, that, at that point, if they're sick, like a common cold, or whatever, then, yeah, then it's all under EBT. But if it's determined that it's directly related to that.
Well, that, that, that's touchy, because if you say, if you say you only are gonna get paid to stay home if it's determined that it's not, and then either they can't get a test, or it takes them two days to get a test, like, they lose two days.
Well, if they were to be tested, it takes 48 hours to get the, get the results.
Yeah, so then they've lost a couple of days not coming in.
But, you know, at the same time, see, see, guidance is telling, it's telling people if you have a fever, stay home.
Well, I don't have a problem doing it.
It's some of the guidance, it says if you have a fever, stay home, don't go to the hospital, so I, it's questionable, you know, we're still trying to figure out how.
Under real hospital, under 100 degrees.
So, uh, listen, I, I, we're learning as we go, and I think that, uh, we're gonna find some bumps in the road in respect to that, for sure, we're gonna have to figure it out as we go. I don't think there's a perfect plan.
I don't think you have anybody who would intentionally make anyone ill, and I don't think you have anyone who would take advantage of this for no reason, so I have no problem making a motion that.
Go ahead, I'll.
That you pay them if they're, they're.
I'll entertain it, I'll entertain it.
Everything you said. Everything you said.
There's my motion, I make a motion that, uh, we pay, continue to pay employees their normal pay, if they're sent home or stay home.
Without digging into the EBTs.
Due to this, yeah.
Doug?
Second.
Okay, any more discussion on this? All in favor, Gary? I think that was a good move, I think we made a good move on that. This way here, we'll.
I don't know what else we could do.
There's not much else, yeah, not much.
Now, then you start scrutinizing everybody, you know, are you sick, are you not sick?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, Gary, where, what do we have left?
Last thing I want for this board to consider is, uh, the town of Madawaska operates our UDAG program, which is a lending program to some businesses in town. Most of those businesses are hospitality-related, and they are going to be impacted by loss of, of, of traffic and revenue. I am, uh, I spoke with the NDC, the people who would, who, uh, handle collections and, and accounts, um, for our UDAG, uh, and I got some guidance that I provided to you, is something that we can do, I'm recommending that we put a moratorium on payments, uh, to those who, businesses who feel like they would benefit from not having to make their monthly payments, for a while, I think we could do it for three months, and then reassess, and at least that would take the, some of the burden of how, worrying about making their own payments back to the UDAG program. Part of the UDAG program requirements, uh, are that they maintain insurance on the properties, and we're not gonna suspend that, obviously, that would not be a high recommendation, but I certainly recommend uh, providing a little bit of relief to our businesses that are gonna be impacted by that, um, and I would make that motion for all of our UDAG accounts, as an option for them, if they would want it, that they could take, they could benefit from that.
So, we have, we have how many businesses?
Three.
Four?
Four.
Four. And, and they're, are they all, they're not all current?
Yes, well, I mean, we have one that's in, one that's in bankruptcy, so, forget that one, but all of the others are all current in their payments, um, but, um, you know, they're gonna be impacted by this, and, uh.
I see no problem with that, I'll make a motion, we accept that we want moratorium on, on UDAG payments.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion by Doug, second by Laurie, all in favor? I saw something, uh, maybe you could talk about, uh, Gary, um, and, and some of your information that you provided and stuff there, how about for, um, uh, late payments, uh, on, on here and there?
Okay, so, some municipalities are waiving interest, uh, on, on payments, um, for council to come like tax and, and, uh, sewer payments, uh, I believe those are charter towns where the legislative body is not, it's not town, it's not town meeting, we've.
Already.
We've. Already assessed what we're gonna charge for interest rates, and when those interest rates start to take effect, when we start to charge interest through the town meeting process. So, this board, I feel, doesn't have the authority to, uh, stop interest on, on, on their late property tax accounts.
Gary.
Well, that makes sense, yeah, that means if we wanted to do something like that, we'd have to go town meeting.
We would have to go to town meeting for that, yes. Last, last thing, um, you know, a couple of things, I know we, Chris Albear, we, who works with us at EMS, he is our, um, our safety guy, he gives us all of our safety trainings, whether it be a fire extinguisher, hepatitis, you know, bloodborne packaging trainings, uh, he works closely with Heather in, in the, in the HR office, to make sure that everybody's up to date on all of their annual trainings, or trainings that need to be acquired periodically, and so I've asked him to come, put together sort of a employee exposure plan that he could recommend, um, and, uh, I think it's something that, I don't necessarily think that the board needs to approve, but I just want you to know that we are working proactively to put together some protocols for our employees, uh, to keep them safe. Just another thing to add, uh, during our downtime, we're gonna call, consider if it's, if it's gonna be some downtime, um, our municipal office, um, accounting system, TRIO, uh, we've been putting off, uh, a much needed upgrade out of our access-based accounting system, and municipal accounting system to what is now what we call Sequo. A lot of towns have already implemented that, but they went through some, there's a lot of glitches that need to be worked out, uh, when you're dumping data from one program to a next, and, and the data, the accounts don't match up, so we're, we have already, you know, I don't have a date yet, uh, but we're going to find a date during this shutdown to go ahead and, and, uh, do that transfer, that move into the new modules, uh, it'll be a good time for us, because typically, if there are some glitches that sometimes cause delays of services, uh, with, with cash receding, and so it's gonna be a good time for us to go ahead and do that, and we're gonna take advantage of that, so, I think during this, any slow time that we find ourselves going to be in, there's gonna be plenty of work for us to do, uh, getting caught up on other things, uh, so we're gonna keep busy, uh, as much as we can, and if, if, any instances where, uh, employees may be able to work home, work from home, we're gonna encourage that as well.
Okay, I'd like to make a statement, if I could, uh, and Jason, you're filming this, right? I just wanna, in advance, thank all our residents, our taxpayers of Madawaska, for understanding, uh, what we're going to go through, what the world is going through, what every community is going through. Uh, we're gonna make some decisions that might affect, you know, affect you, but we're gonna work, uh, hand in hand to try to make this as smooth of a transition to where we're going as possible. Uh, again, thank you for your understanding, I wanna thank all the department heads that are here today, I wanna wish all of you good luck, EME, EMA, everyone that's gonna potentially be exposed. I think, uh, working together will get through this, uh, and, uh, that's, I guess that's all I have to add, unless you guys wanna add something.
I'm on set.
On set, all right, at this, uh, point in time, is there a motion to adjourn?
Thank you.
Laurie, second by Doug. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Couldn't it be a beautiful thing if.